I got my student loans like three years ago and now I'll end up with more. It's like. My bad part is like work doesn't sponsor. Their argument is that another company would hire you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:00 PM on the 19th of August and this is the regular school board meeting of Monticello District 882. If you're inclined, please rise with us for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and fair and just.
At this point, we will move to approve our tentative agenda as the permanent agenda for the evening.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the tentative agenda to the permanent agenda for the evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. We do not have any citizens' comments for this evening. Moving into item number five, our fiscal stability. This is a consent agenda item consisting of the approval of minutes from August the 5th, our personnel matters, and our bill summaries for the month. Members of the board receive all this information, approximately a week to a week and a half ahead of time, have the opportunity to ask questions about any of the information that is on there. And then we do move these three items together.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Moving into item six, we have a wonderful opportunity this evening to recognize one of our students and I'd like to welcome Gary Revenig to the podium to discuss this celebration that we have ahead of us.
Right. Good evening and I'd like Lance and his parents, Joe and Tracy, to come All right, we have a first in school history. Lance, this past summer here, end of the spring season, out of 12,000 students participating in trap shooting across the state of Minnesota. So think about that. I don't, we've had state champions here before, but we've never had someone in competition with 12,000 individuals. And Lance represented us in the state tournament, made it as an individual, and biggest stage of his life, he gets 100 shots. Lance made all 100. So he is a coast A champion, 100. And before I turn it over to Lance for a few questions, I just need to thank mom and dad. So Joe and Tracy, who are here tonight as parents, are our coaches. And they took over for Tammy Balloon and they've done an amazing job. They're so passionate about trap shooting. They think trap 365 days a year and they're constantly hounding me to make our program even better and I love it. And it's a huge honor to win and to win at that level. So congratulations Lance. He also got to go to the Twins game, was recognized there. So he's kind of on tour right now and he's only going to be a senior. He's back this year. So back to defend the title. So congratulations. Any questions for Lance?
I have two questions. Did I read also that there was another competition in the Twin Cities that you took first in that one as well?
Yeah, I shot MTA competition at Alexandria and I shot 100 out of 100 there too.
That is outrageous. And so, you know, there's another Olympics coming up in Los Angeles in 2028 and you have four years to get ready. So we're watching you.
Now, on behalf of the board, we do have a certificate to you just from the board recognizing your achievements and your honor. And obviously, we'd love to do a picture with all this whole up here. But are there any more questions? I don't want to steal answers.
Congratulations. That's really exciting.
Yeah, congratulations. And then you mentioned the MTA. Is that the same as trap shooting or is it a little bit different?
Yeah, it's just the Minnesota.
Okay, all right.
Minnesota trap association.
Okay.
And thank you Lance's parents for stepping up and co-
You must be amazingly proud. We love it, yeah.
The journey. Just staying focused, not doing other stuff. Cause I shoot, like I'm at a club four days a week, working or shooting, so.
How many shots per day?
Normally it's like 75 to 100 a day.
He doesn't need it.
It was pouring rain, by the way, too. Pouring rain. But that's what he does best in that. So now we know we gotta have it rain the day he-
Rain, wind, all the elements. He's got it. So, yeah. Let's get a picture or do you want one?
Well, you don't want to add in the picture.
We have Jamie here.
Stephanie will be glad to take your picture.
The stars show in the middle.
The absolute best part of being on the field.
Thank you.
You know, the administration gets invited out every year so by the coaches. So please take that opportunity. I think Ms. Crittoe surprised a few people in one of her visits. And I've been able to go out there and learn from the coaches and the shooters.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We've had one person beat one of our guys.
Right there.
Well, it's hard to beat that, but we'll go ahead and move on with the rest of our agenda this evening. But it sure is wonderful. That's the best part of being on the school board is to get to celebrate the successes of our kids when they really excel in a way like that. So moving on to item number seven, we have a resolution for the board. And then it may seem like it's falling at a bit of an awkward spot here as to what this is. So the Minnesota School Boards Association has a government relations arm and they work with our legislators every year and with the committees on items that are important to school districts. And so individual school districts and delegates to the delegate assembly can submit resolutions to go onto that platform. And that's what this particular resolution is. We approved two the last meeting and one this meeting. So this particular resolution is, I'm going to have member Melissa Curtis read it for us.
Just the highlighted part?
Just the highlighted part, I think that's-
It resolved MSBA urges legislature to fully cover the cost of a carton of milk for public school students who bring a home prepared meal to school for lunch.
And so is there any discussion from the board on this resolution?
I think it's a good thing to bring forward. It just seems odd why, you know, we could cover a whole meal with the milk with the kids that do bring the lunches. It just seems odd that that would not have been thought about.
At the legislative level.
When it was first passed, so.
Yeah, at the situation as it is now, the students actually have to stand in line and take a hot lunch and discard it if they don't want to eat it in order to get a carton of milk. And there is also a provision for free to get it for no cost, no cost, no additional cost. And I believe kindergarten students can receive an additional carton of milk midday or mid, as a snack, without a cost. So it's only students one through 12 that are kind of affected by this. And we did the math in our district. If a student were to buy one carton of milk every day, it would cost a family approximately $117 over the course of a school year per student. So we feel that this is something that if the legislature feels strongly about providing free meals, the nutrition component of the milk carton is the same whether you bring your lunch or have the school prepared lunch. So we're asking them to cover that this year. So.
Does this need a second?
Yes.
Second?
Read by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to our collaborative connections. We are very blessed that pretty much every month we have donations to our district. Last year that was nearly $300,000 in donations, both monetary and in kind. And this year is starting out to be just as exciting for us. And so we do have donations that Superintendent Olson will be talking about.
Absolutely. So the first one that I'd like to bring forward is $2,500 to sponsor the resiliency conference that we had at the end of July. That's from Wright County United Way. And then the second one is Carleen and James Jansen for $500 for students in need. Carleen comes forward for the last two years and she is an admin assistant over at Center Care for the executive director of hearing. So it's just, she just really, her and her husband make a decision to come back and give to the school district in order to help students in need. So two great giving entities just coming forward for our kids and great programming.
So we have a resolution for these donations this evening.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board District 882 to greatly accept the following donations. Wright County United Way for the amount of 2,500, sponsor resiliency conference, and Carleen and James Jansen for $500 for students in need.
All those in favor of accepting the donations as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And motion passes 5-0. Now, we are delighted to welcome our neighbors from Big Lake School District. This evening, we have with us Big Lake Superintendent Tim Trunback, Sherburne Northern County Wright Co-op Director John Weekly, and Big Lake School Board Member Ashley Chabillon. They're going to be discussing some of the issues related to our special education co-op. And for anyone watching that is unaware, we have a co-op between Monticello, Big Lake, and Becker School District for our special education services. So welcome Superintendent. And we're interested to hear what you have to say.
And just real quick, I just think it's a great timing. We have a work session tonight where we're going to be talking about aligning our budget and looking into the future of how, what next steps are we going to take. And that's what we get to hear about you. So we get to hear the steps that you've taken as a community and see how it's going and where you're at in that process. So we couldn't be more excited to have this. I just don't ever remember having this kind of collaboration with districts. And this collaboration, we're pretty proud of Becker, Big Lake, and Monticello, the three superintendents who are part of John Weekly's cooperative, so.
Yes, Madam Chair, Superintendent Olson, as well as board members. Thank you so much for having us. Super excited. And I'll be honest with you, it's a little strange. First of all, I'm wearing the wrong colors apparently.
You're good.
I don't know what it is, but go magic, I guess. I don't know. Wait, is this recorded? Wait, no. No, I thought I would loosen up just a little bit there. But no, we're super excited. I'm here tonight to actually, and actually what Superintendent Olson said, it's very true. We've really been working on collaboration. We're part of a co-op. We serve our students. We're way more alike than we are different. We have a lot of opportunities for us to do some alignment and try to share some things and try to work together because together we can actually maybe offer some things that we couldn't offer otherwise. And tonight, I'm just going to talk to you about one of those types of things. And actually, I'm going to invite John up here shortly. But before I do that, I also want to invite or just kind of acknowledge Ashley Chabillon, who's a board member. She's present often and she is here. So if you have specific questions or things you want to ask, she's obviously a fair game as well. So, but I want to talk to you. We do have on the ballot coming up here this fall, we have three questions that are going to be coming up to a vote. It's, we're going to have a tech levy, and we've got an operating levy, and we've got a bond referendum. I'm not going to bore you with the details because it has to do with Big Lake things or the tax impact and all of that fun stuff because I've given lots of presentations on that. But I do want to talk to you about the bond referendum. The bond referendum actually, it's, and I think there is an image that can be displayed.
Can we pull that up, Kevin?
So our bond referendum, just to kind of orientate yourself, it's actually, I always tell people that levy for learning, bond for building. So the bond portion of this is a facility. And the portion in yellow is actually a multipurpose space that's going to connect our high school and our middle school. And it's an indoor, obviously, fieldhouse type setting that's got some other additional spaces, approximately 65,000 square feet. Just to orientate yourself, this is to the right, to the west there, or to the east is our football field and our track. And straight up on top is our high school gymnastics, is that kind of square box right up above the word facility or plaza. That's where the gymnastics space is. Just to kind of orientate yourself of where we're talking about. But what I want to talk to you about tonight is actually the special education space that's kind of that curved spot down there that's approximately 15,000 square feet. We, as a district, identified some needs and talked about timing with some debt dropping off and things. And we have an opportunity for us to ask our voters to support these two facilities. And this one in particular is of interest to not only us, but also to the co-op, which means you. We have some specific needs in particular in the area of a setting four, which is your behavioral type setting. Currently, we do not necessarily have a continuum of services and many times we house a lot of these services inside our buildings because there are not spaces for these students to be programmed correctly. A lot of times, they end up on waitlist. And if you are a teacher in the house or a principal, you know what I'm talking about. Because I do know that they, there are some challenges and we do the best we can to provide those programs for those students. But sometimes it's a real big challenge. We are proposing and we have, because of those needs, that we add this additional square footage and we utilize that space essentially as co-op classrooms for this programming. So again, not just benefiting Big Lake, but also benefiting the overall co-op, which includes Monticello and Becker. So that's essentially where we're at with this whole piece. But I did want to point out that we do have, obviously, because we have a strategy in how we approach the vote piece, we have a tech levy, but the operating levy needs to pass for the bond referendum to pass as well. So I just want to make sure you kind of full, knew the full picture because we need to have operating dollars to support the new facility as well as other operating costs. So that's kind of where we're at with the three questions. I'm going to invite John up here a little bit to talk about special education program and some of the needs. And again, obviously, I would open up the Florida questions if you might have some afterwards. So, John?
Hello, Monticello and members of the board. John Weekly, I'm the Director of the Sherburne Northern Wright Special Ed Cooperative. And as Tim said, we serve the communities of Monticello, Becker, and Big Lake. I can't reiterate enough how excited I am for the collaboration that's happening between the three districts, not only in special education, but just talking bigger picture and maybe eventually regular education. And so there's a lot of exciting dialogue that happens kind of behind the scenes as we're talking about ways to best serve students in this region. The cooperative's mission ultimately is to make sure that all students have the level of care that they need. And we've done a great job over the years, but the needs have been changing as we go. And as Tim said, level four programming has become a real priority need for us. Biggest challenge is not programming for these students, but also within our current footprint of buildings, doing it in a very efficient manner. So historically, we've had programming, but it's been spread out across multiple buildings. And this year, we're able to kind of have a, have an immediate solution for it, but not a long-term solution by leasing some space where we're able to get three of our four major level four programs into one location. We still have one that's occupying space here in the, in the middle school. Our goal is to be able to get all those programs into a real state-of-the-art innovative space where we can meet their needs. Setting four students tend to have higher incidences of, you know, aggression, agitation, and elopement. And so by having a program that meets their individual needs, it doesn't only support them, but it supports the learning of all students by having all students have a regulated learning environment. The goal is not to take those students and put them in a separate facility, you know, forever. The goal is to help them get the skills they need, help them transition back into the least restrictive environment if possible. By having the location and the continuum of care within that program, having the maximum efficiency, then we're able to meet those needs of those students. Question three really would allow us to remove some students from waiting lists as well. We have students that are within our member districts that due to not being able to grow the program as quickly as we would like, they're on waiting lists. And that tends to stagnate and allow them not to make the progress that we would like. If we're able to move forward with the question three on November 29th, when it gets voted in, then we would be able to really be innovative in those programs. As far as benefits to Monticello, so ultimately, this really benefits Monticello, Big Lake, and Becker students. It would allow us to be efficient and it would allow us to have these students in programs that really spur their growth and potential. Any questions about the setting for cooperative program initiative?
Yeah, I have a question on the space itself. So this bond referendum up in Big Lake. So of this space that you want to build, how full would that space of special education be? And how many years would the capacity be supported before you would have to build? Like are we, are you just building to fill up a space on there and the last thing you want to do is ask for money, build a building or an addition?
I think that was part of the long-term, long-term discussion.
And then seven, eight years later, we're at capacity again, so.
So it would allow us to move all of our existing programs into the location with the square footage that we have. But it would also allow us to increase each of those programs by, you know, four to at least four students is kind of the goal, is the goal there. But additionally, the design of the program was that they could build easily within that space structure so that they could increase capacity if we needed to increase down the road. But ultimately, we'd be able to start off with filling the needs of all of our current students and being able to bring in additional students, potentially students that are on waiting lists or even students from around surrounding communities. I get a call at least weekly asking for program availability from neighboring communities like Buffalo, you know, down in the metro and additionally in St. Cloud area. And so we'd be able to actually bring in some students from outside of our member districts that we could charge for and also recoup some funding for that space.
So right now, would the capacity be 20% full, 30% full, 80% full?
Of the, of the future space?
Yeah, if you had the future space right now.
I would say it'd probably be right around 80%.
So I just, Ashley Chabillon. So the school board has had a lot of conversations about this. And obviously, what we're dealing with right now is just a blue blob on a screen. So there are no plans drawn other than figuring out where it would fit on our property. But as a school board, we've had very extensive conversations. And one of the recurring themes is making sure we do build this for the future, that we have spaces that are able to adapt to growing needs in this population as well as growing needs of actual bodies, you know, student body. And so I love that you brought that up. And that's something that, you know, we, we talk about a lot too. And something that we definitely will be looking forward to. I've had John pull a lot of numbers about, you know, how many we have and waitlists and, you know, what the area need is and stuff. And, you know, so far, he's, you know, they feel very comfortable with square footage that we'd be able to allocate to grow, you know, for foreseeable future. But yes, thank you for bringing that up. And I will make sure I bring that back to our board as well because that is something that we've talked a lot about and we're with you. We want to make sure that if we're spending this money, we, we're building for the future.
So we kind of calculated our existing footprints in each of the buildings and piecemealed those together to get close to that 15,000 with, we were at about 13,000 if I remember exactly right with our square footage across what we currently existing have.
Okay.
It's not very efficient space, right? So sometimes it's a program that has two rooms that maybe have a little distance between them. And so not only do you lose, you know, efficiency with that, it's really challenging when you're working with this population to be able to do those transitions. And so by having them all in a nice, safe, secure space with less transitional spaces, we're able to really help with safety and that climate. we're able to really help with safety and that climate of students. And additionally, being able to bring the teams together, just right now, we have a lot of islands of teams that we have amazing people, but they're working kind of in silos. And just having that support network of a broader group of professionals helps them program development, but it also really helps them with being able to rely on each other. So like, if we had a setting four teacher absent from one of our buildings right now, if they were sick, it's kind of a crisis, right? We don't really have a long sub list of people that are wanting to come into the spaces. But by putting these programs together, we already have a safety net built in there where we can reassign people within that space and support those students even if somebody's absent. So the concept of bringing them all together can be a little daunting because you're talking about a lot of high need students in one space, but ultimately, it will help us in the long run.
And again, tonight, we're not here asking for anything other than
Right.
Awareness and just information. Because like I said, it's it's one of those things that it will strengthen the opportunities for our co-op and we believe in that co-op. So I guess the only ask is to continue that support for the co-op. And I know that we're these this isn't the works, this is on the ballot, and we're hopeful that we'll get a favorable. But I will say this, whether this passes or not in November, this is a continuous need. So this is one that I oftentimes tell the board, and she's heard this before, that it's a bit of a journey sometimes. It's not necessarily a destination or you don't necessarily arrive right away. These needs don't just go away. You have to continue to find solutions. And this is this is one we believe could be a solution. But if our community chooses that it's not at this time, then we'll try another another way, so.
And then separating the level three from the level four is only going to benefit the level three classification of students.
So like in special education, we have students that are in settings one, two, and three. Setting three tends to be where they're spending, you know, about half of the half of their time outside of the regular education spaces. Setting four is a higher percentage of being out of there. And so currently, we do have students that maybe have a setting four level of need that are in setting three. And by delineating them out of there, that does help
The level three.
The settings one, two, and significantly.
I have a question. We've relocated some of our special education assets to the high school from the very building that we had. And how would this bill this build that you guys are going to do, how would that affect us, that program?
Probably can take it. So we moved the ALP and we the high school has been planning to have the ALP at the high school as a long-term solution. So really, the short-term solution over at the work-based learning center has really no impact on the high school programming. It's more the co-op programming.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I forgot that that was ALP specifically. And then I just want to make it clear for any of the people that might be watching that this particular question is not going to show up on our ballot. It will only be
Big Lake vote.
Well, it does affect us, but I mean, that we may have some questions about, you know, do we only get this one question because it affects the co-op or something like that?
Yeah, no, and that's thank you for clarifying that. And and when we talked about this, we talked about communication efforts, we thought we thought that it would be really helpful for us. We've already been to the Becker School Board and now we're here because, let's just face it, our families are across the street from each other and nine times out of 10, probably related to somebody in there. So it's important for us just to understand that we're kind of all on the same page. And we're all part of that co-op. And again, we really value that. And Superintendent Olson has worked really hard to kind of drive and lead that collaboration. We want to continue that effort. And we believe in the co-op, we believe in the services they provide, we believe in special education because every child is different and we want to strengthen that. And we want to provide the best program, whether it be through the co-op or your own individual districts. And the co-op is just a fantastic entity to kind of strengthen all of that. So I really feel I really feel confident and I really feel good about that, hoping hoping to strengthen it with with this.
Any further discussion from the board? Other questions? Thank you guys so much for coming this evening. Very much appreciate you coming.
Fantastic job.
And good luck with your questions on your bond. Moving on to item number nine, teaching and learning, we'd like to welcome Jeremiah Mack and his team from Community Education this evening. They're going to give us an update and I'll let you introduce each of the members of your team.
All right. Well, we're back again to just talk about past school year and then kind of look ahead to look ahead to this coming school year. So today, we have Jen Johnson, our Early Learning Coordinator, Andrea Greenwald, our Magic Adventures Coordinator, Ryan Seidel, our Theater Manager and Foundation Director, and Jill Kudowski, our Activities and Recreation Coordinator. Stephanie is not here, she just got married on Friday, so she is out on honeymoon. And Jill became our AB manager, went home with an injury today, so. So I get to cover two parts, but let's get started. Perfect. As we laid out last time, we're here, our overall program goals, Community Ed cross about trying to make efficient use of all our school facilities and grounds, coordinate with other local agencies and outside groups to best program for our community needs here in Monticello, and try to find a balanced programming approach that hits all participants because we do serve everybody from birth to death. So we're the only part of the school that serves everybody, all 22,500, 23,000 people in Monticello plus outside of our boundaries. And then always, how do we continually monitor what we're offering and how can we get better? And what are those gaps that we're not serving so we can fill in those gaps or work with partners that can meet those needs? Because we don't have to do everything, right? But we can do a lot. So these are our main program areas. We have early learning, adult basic ed, our facilities, foundation is new, marketing, enrichment programming, and school age childcare. So we'll start with our youngest learners, with Jen.
All right, so for early learning, we have ECFE, we have school readiness, and we have early childhood screening. And so this year in ECFE, we served over 600 participants with our classes and special events. We had a new class this year that we tried out at Nature Based and it was very well received. We had a waiting list, it was called Forest Friends, and we did that on Friday mornings. And so that was really fun to see that take off. And we're going to be doing it again this next year. For ECFE, we did several family events like Big Wheels, we did prom at EEC. We also did an event out at Bertram. And this year, when we had that event out at Bertram, this past year has been the 50th anniversary for ECFE across the state of Minnesota. And so we invited the Teddy Bear Band to come out. And they had written a song for ECFE this year to celebrate that. So we were honored to have them come and enjoy that celebration with us. And the families loved singing along with the songs and dancing and all those fun things. For school readiness, we had over 250 people participate or students at Eastview and then 23 students out at Nature Base. And for early childhood screening, we had over 250 kids ages three to five that were screened. And the one other thing I just wanted to point out is Rally to Read, that Call to Action Initiative. Just excited about the things that will be happening with that as we continue to move on with that this year. And then our next slide. These are just some upcoming things for this year that we're looking forward to. We're adding in ECFE another new class relating to nature. We're going to do this one at Eastview, it's called Backyard Buddies. So we'll add some nature components just at our main site. And then we'll continue with our ECFE family events. And then I'm honored to be part of the statewide ECFE Celebrating the 50 Years Committee. And so I will be presenting with some other people on the committee at the MCA Conference this fall. And then for school readiness, we look forward again to having our Family Fun Night for Leap Into Literacy that was very much well received by our community. We had close to 400 people there. And so we're glad to be doing that again. We're going to be adding another assessment tool for our school readiness students aged four. It's called Fast Bridge and that's to align with the Fast Bridge tool that we use in kindergarten so we can see how our assessments align from year to year with them. And then we are adding an Early Learning Core position through that Early Learning Core group, which goes along with our Rally to Read initiative and just supporting more kids in early literacy skills.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having us. I'm Andrea, I coordinate the childcare program, Magic Adventures. I'm going to focus on kind of how our numbers are looking, how they were last year, how they are going for this year, because that always seems to be an important piece. So last year, we served 280 students. I do have 50 staff members, which seems like a lot, but they all have different availability. And so some of them maybe are only available two mornings and some might only be available three afternoons. And so I have three amazing site leads that helped me coordinate all of it, scheduling, things like that. So we are able to serve as many students as we possibly can. We had 51 additional students last year than we did in '23, '24. And then this year, our waiting lists, and I'll get to this, was at about 70 at the beginning of the summer and I've got it down to 33. So we're getting there, I've got applications coming in. We're sitting right at 303 kiddos for this coming school year so far. This summer, we have been busy. We operate from 12 6:00 AM until 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So again, my staff is absolutely amazing. It gets to be kind of a long summer, but it's been great. They've got great teamwork and it has been one of our most enjoyable summers, I would say. The last day is Friday and then we have some non-school days starting up before the school year starts. We went to 26 different field trips. We are busy twice a week. A lot of them are between four and seven-hour field trips. So again, I have lovely staff members that take the students off-site. We went down to the Minnesota Zoo, Baker Park is a good one, Ninja United is a new one that we're trying this year and they loved it. Yeah, 285 last Friday, I got a lot more in. We have 303, like I said, for this school year so far. And a huge part of being able to offer more spots is really my work with Mr. Olson and Ms. Chido at the high school. And she really was helpful in figuring out this new youth service class that we were able to add. And so I have 15, sorry, 15 high schoolers that will be starting. They're not available every day again. If they were, I'd probably be able to wipe out that waitlist. But that has really helped in getting additional students, childcare services. And yeah, Sherry at the office is great helping me post all their jobs and a Facebook message actually was I had a staff that graduated college that was wanting a different career and she's back. So it's been kind of neat to be able to try to, again, offer as many spots as we possibly can and get some old staff back in the door. Yeah, and I have to, you know, slowly add because we're regulated by the state, so through the Department of Human Services. So I can't just add everybody off the list. I have to make sure that we have enough staff for our ratios, so.
Andrea, can I ask a question about those waitlists? So approximately, how many kids do you have on a waitlist?
33 right now.
For the school year?
About, yep, about 10 at each building, which is not bad. It's probably it's the least amount of waitlist that we've had and this is my seventh school year. So that youth service class has really helped. And then parents aren't they aren't really needing before school as much. I only have about 45 kids at each building in the morning, but after school, I'm up to 80 to 100 after school. So the principals have been great to work with me and get more spaces and so thank you and the custodians.
Are you able to talk about last year, like, how long did families stay on the waitlist?
Some of them, the whole year. And if I did have sometimes if I did have a spot, they had already found care. So that's kind of hard to say, I guess. But yeah, some of them, if they didn't register right away.
Are we limited in terms of our physical space, like how many students we can have in a room?
Not yet.
Are we limited to how many people we can hire? So it's a staffing issue, not a physical space issue?
Right, yep, yep. Because I know you guys would support us if we said we need more space and the principals are very supportive, so that has been really helpful.
Yeah, we've talked about the waitlist several times
Every year, yeah.
Couple of years, so it's certainly one of our priorities to not have any families on the waitlist if we can get to that point, you know, in some mechanism.
Yep.
I just wanted to be clear.
Try telling every parent, like, I am doing every I'm one person in the office, I'm doing everything that I can. I've got a couple more interviews this week, one next week. So slowly, they're trickling in. I think after COVID, more people are looking to work again. This summer was the best, I think we had less than 15 on the waitlist, so.
The summer?
The summer, yep.
Were you able to bring any of them off the waitlist over the course of the summer?
Yeah, like, I think we got down to 10. But I mean, we start, I really start at like, you know, 40 and then I can get down based on hiring more, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And another thing about like Andrea's waitlist, too, it depends on what students next on the list. So we can't pass over students with special needs. So we might have we might be able to hire one staff, but we might only be able to service one student, too. So it kind of depends on who's next on the waiting list of how we have to accept them into the program. You know, obviously, if everybody has no special needs, as I said, we could take, you know, 10 in potentially, but also then their contracts will mix and match on days and how the staff are coming and going, too. So it's quite a few variables. All right, next, enrichment and marketing this year with Stephanie. She had over 541 participants with 408 different individuals taking a Community Ed class in adult programming. This this is just enrichment, not recreation, so just enrichment programming, over 950 different individuals taking an enrichment class either in the summer or after school. All of our trips and tours, we do partner with, as we talked, with Big Lake was here earlier, we partner with several of our surrounding communities to offer adult trips for mostly our senior citizens. Steph just had one last week where they had a bunch of younger people on the trip. So it just kind of depends on the trip. So it's nice that we collaborate. Also, with our youth enrichment this year, we've started collaborating, especially on some of our things, with Big Lake as well, to offer certain classes that maybe just went run, but then we'd have some classes in Big Lake, some classes here. So we share, get classes to run so that we don't have to cancel opportunities for those students, especially ones who might have two or three here and they get three or four. And we can run the class and still run that opportunity. It was not as hard with the bridge closing down to get across town. But as once that is done, it just that just sharing those resources to get make sure that students have the opportunities to do that. Another thing we introduced this summer between some enrichment classes and swimming lessons is some dynamic pricing structure where we had different price points. So we had like the regular price, a couple higher prices and a reduced rate. And we just allow families to pick the price that best fits their budget. So we kind of told them that and said, if you really value, you want to help offset costs for other families, you can pick a higher price point or you can pick the normal price point or reduced price point. And then they don't it takes away that stigmatism of having to ask and call for us to give you a discount because that's kind of about the only way we've had it. So it was very successful with swimming lessons, we'll kind of talk to that about this year. So it made it a lot easier for families to not ask for help. And we don't know the instructors don't know what they paid, they just see there's roster. So we, you know, we can see who paid, but it doesn't matter to us. It's just we want to best serve our clients in that way. You also can see some pictures on there, so, which things that she did this summer. Now we got Jill.
I'm Jill Kudowski, it's good to see everybody in the new role. Some summer recreation offerings, we had over 1,859 users from July 1st to June 31st. A list of some examples we offered this summer is sports samplers, strength and conditioning, basketball camps, golf camps with the Monticello Country Club, swimming lessons, gymnastics, taekwondo, lacrosse clinics, and diving clinics. Some big events for the facility, we had over 48 non-district users, so 5,750 hours. 27 out-of-district users, which is 3,650 hours. Some partnerships that we've built and that I have in this new role, met with the city of Monticello, we're offering a co-ed adult volleyball league, co-ed softball leagues. We're doing some pickleball tournaments at the city, swimming lessons, we talked about that. And then they also did a needs assessment that they're going to share their data with us. Some organizations I've met with is youth basketball, youth baseball, volleyball, and wrestling. And then again, just collaborating with the high school coaches to see how to best utilize the facilities.
Another one fun thing that is part of our department is obviously our adult basic education program. We are a we are the fiscal host for adult basic ed programs. So it's kind of like just a larger co-op where we have 16 schools, four county jails, two workforce sites, and we And we also have a center-- Career Force, otherwise Workforce Center is the old name, but now it's the Career Center. And we do offer official GED testing here in Monticello Schools. This year, just for Monticello students, we had over-- We had 169 different adults take ESL or eight GED prep classes with Monticello. And within that mix, we had 26 different countries represented and 10 different languages spoken. So we are getting more and more diverse. Looking at Jill's numbers, 37% of our students were of Caucasian, and the rest were all people of color or immigrants coming into our community. So we are serving a very diverse group of adult learners coming in for EL and AB services. Also, our makeup is about 90-- We had 92 female and 76 male participants. So it's pretty balanced of who's coming in. You know, obviously, knowing-- Looking at our classes, we do serve far more EL students. We do GED students. So we have a lot-- Julia did a great job on Monday and Wednesday nights of having that. And Elizabeth did a great job during the day. And then we also started a family-lit program this year in conjunction with ECFE. So we have moms or dads coming in with their little-- youngest learners to learn parenting skills and ECF and those kind of skills. But also then the adults had a time to work on their English skills so they could be better prepared to speak English around the community. We had a wide variety of ranges that our students went from. As our youngest learners can only be 17. You have to be 17 to participate in adult basic ed. And you have to have dropped out of high school. So we do get several students will come from the high school and ask. And we're like, "Well, you have to do this, this, and this." And they don't come back. They usually just go back to the high school because it is a lot of work for them to officially drop out of school. We want them to finish, but we also know high school's not the fit for everybody. And we do get a lot of students that are 18 to 24 that dropped out and then come back and take their GED and get it done quickly. So our goal is to make sure that they get their GED so they can be more successful going to college or getting a job. Or we get a lot of-- We've had adults that are in their 50s say, "I never got my diploma, but I need it now to get a promotion at work." So they come in and get their GED. And all these services are free to adults. So we get paid based on total census in our consortium and how many contact hours we have with our people. And this year, we ran over 42,000 contact hours consortium-wide, so-- Which is an increase of about 17% over last year. And we'll have Ryan close.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Ryan Seidel, Theater Manager. And I'm also the Executive Director of the Monticello Schools Educational Opportunities Foundation. Some updates on the foundation. We are wrapping up our recruitment efforts in order to fill our advisory committee. We've already had a handful of solid applicants, and we are finishing up some meetings with local organizations and businesses this month to try and get their voices heard in the foundation as well. Just this afternoon, we wrapped up a meeting with the Rotary Club. And in the few short hours since that has concluded, I've already had two applicants from that. So I'm hoping to have that wrapped up by the end of August, early September so we can actually stand the board up and actually start meeting. We-- Just this past week, we successfully rolled out the Employee Contribution Fund, which is a voluntary payroll donation. Talking to the folks over at HR, we've already had a solid number of folks enroll in that. And I'm sure that that will continue to grow as the school year starts. And then we are setting up some fundraising efforts for the fall season. My thoughts right now, I'd like to do a couple of competitive sporting events. I'd like to do a competitive weightlifting event and either a volleyball, badminton, or pickleball, just depending on what's going to get the most engagement. My thought behind that would be just to charge a base entry fee and open it up to multiple age groups, both students and adults within the community. And then all of those proceeds would go directly into the foundation. And then I'd also like to implement a talent show, possibly over at the high school, and then set up multiple trivia and karaoke nights, which would be free to the public to join. But we would also hold open donations at those events. Looking over to the theater and the auditorium side of things, we established the annual safety inspections for both the auditoriums. We had the high school one on July 1st, and we passed that with flying colors. We have the middle school auditorium inspection scheduled for August 26th. I'm sure that we will pass that as well with both of our auditoriums being in great condition. And then some recent and upcoming plays that we have put on for the community. Back in June, the Northwest Talent Academy put on Robin Hood and the Sherwood Hoodies. That was over at the high school. We just had North Star Arts wrap up their production of Clue here at the middle school this past weekend. Great turnout for that. In the last week of September and the first week of October, we are inviting Storybook Theater to come and do Goldilocks and the Three Bears. We're looking to cast about 50 to 80 students in that, grades first through 12th, which would be about a week-long workshop for the students to get in, learn some theater, and then put on a production for the community. We are also putting on Alice in Wonderland here at the middle school in October. We're finalizing the dates for that currently. And then, of course, we have the annual high school musical, which I was fortunate enough to receive the opportunity to direct this year. So I'm very much looking forward to getting into the space with the students and packing the house and putting on a great-- A great performance for the community, so. Depending on any questions, that is all I have. All right, thank you, guys.
Aquatics. I just want to recognize-- Just to call out our amazing aquatics program. Kristin said we were gold level, red cross level, learn to swim. I was trying to figure out what that was, but I couldn't figure out. So but she said, "Hey, put this on there. It's a good thing." This past year, during the summertime, we had 860 different students take swimming lessons. And we had over 273 people participate in summer-- During school year participation between pool and pizzas and private swimming lessons. And then, like we said, we talked about the dynamic pricing where we had the four tiers. And actually, looking, our increase-- Our overall numbers went up, and our revenue did not go down. So that was my main concern. It's like, how are we going to follow this out? So it was successful, so we'll try it again next year. It did help in the office not having 17,000 phone calls or doing price adjustments, but we still haven't trained the public of signing up for one at a time versus the whole summer. Then we have to switch you 17 times because you passed or didn't pass your swimming lessons. So but that's okay. I also want to thank Kristin for 10 years of service. This was her last summers, as you would have saw. So we currently have a-- We're looking for a new aquatic expert-- Part-time aquatics person to help run all of the amazing cool opportunities we have during the school year and the summertime. But Kristin did plan all the school year before she left, so it makes it a little bit easier for us. Also, just want to highlight a little bit of NWTA. Janine and Leanne will be here later this year to talk-- Just give an overview of summer. But we had-- As we had, 10 different school districts participated. We had over 390 different students take classes over the four weeks. And this was our sixth year and our biggest year of fun. So we just want to-- And we do have room to keep growing. So we just need to make sure that we get more students. And it's always the fun part is figuring out those specialty spaces of facts and different stuff like that, so. And we don't want to kick everybody out of the high school. But if we have to, I'll think about it, so. Any questions for any of us?
Not a question, but just a comment. I was fortunate enough to go and spend the day-- One of the days at the Northwest Talent Academy. And I was astonished at how it has grown over the last couple of years and all of the different activities that were there. And as we went around, she had them raise their hand if they had come before or if they had signed up for more than one class. And the kids that were there were very enthusiastic. So this is really an amazing opportunity that our community has taken over. Years ago, the nearest program was in Maple Grove. So this is really something that I think is a feather in our cap and that we need to continue to support it.
I second Kathy's comment. However, my question is on the recreation and facility use. It shows that you guys are on June 1st to July 31st. Is there a reason why we stop in July and don't carry into the middle of August or end of August?
I think Jill just pulled the numbers for a certain time. We do have programming--
All right, that's what I wanted to clarify.
That's just the-- So we do have swimming lessons that go from like May through till swim season starts.
Okay, all right.
Summer programming will run through the whole summer, so.
I want to make sure.
We have Magic Ventures year-round. We have programming all the time, so.
Anybody else from the board? Questions or comments for community education?
You've briefed us on the Northwest Talent Academy before in the past about goals. And I know, was it space for why we're limited? Or do we have enough space for that to continue to grow? And if so, what's our goal number?
We have enough space to continue to grow. It just depends upon specialty spaces is more of a challenge because we only have one fax room. So it's just trying to figure out if they need to do cooking or certain things for spaces, what those may look. And we're trying to be-- We still can go upstairs. We just try not to go upstairs for the custodians. So we can grow more into the high school. It's just certain rooms are a challenge. So if we can-- We can only offer so many cooking classes. How do you tier those cooking classes? You know, our goal, we'd love to have four weeks. We have lots of parents that would like to come every week, you know. But they ask for that, but then we put out there, and the numbers don't always do that. So it's just kind of-- Once they come like seven to like eight-- All eight classes for four weeks, they want more. But then it's still having to make sure enough people can come. And I think we tried this year. It was a little bit of trying to have people to pay for transportation. So I just trying to think away that barrier of transportation is usually that versus saying it's free, I think would change a little bit different because we didn't do midday routes because it was going to be $1,500 a week for one bus route. So that's expensive. So as it did-- So if we talk with all of our member districts, is how can we-- We have a little bit of money put chipped in that we don't have to pay because if everybody paid $1,500, that could cover all the busing for everybody for the whole summer and having routes to go, you know, from Foley down to Becker, Big Lake to here, you know, Zimmerman to here, right? So just running different routes that kids can ride the bus. But taking away that barrier of fees.
And how are we for hiring teachers for that? Do we have plentiful supply? Is it kind of tight if we were going to grow the program?
Yes, I think it all-- You know, it's more-- The teachers are our best salesman for that. This year, we had our most proposals we ever had. And we do a good job of making a decision sometime right around spring break if classes are going to run. So if a teacher's classes does not run, they still have the opportunity to go back and do summer school or do something different. So they all want to work with us because they get paid pretty well based on how many kids they have in their class. So they do a good job. And we have a lot of returning teachers and we get a lot of new teachers too. So sometimes, too, it's like, what is their proposal, what they want and what's offered?
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Jeremiah. I appreciate you and your team coming and giving us a briefing. And good luck, Ryan, with coaching all the new plays coming up, musicals.
Thank you.
Good job, community education.
So moving on to item number 10, safe and healthy culture. We'd like to welcome Mr. Terry Woodworth, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, to the podium. He's going to discuss with us our lead testing procedures and our management plan. Just an action item for the board.
Yep, this is an action item. So again, thank you for giving me a couple minutes of your time. So yes, we've had to revise the lead and the water management plan. This is to meet the new criteria that went into July 1st. And again, this will require board approval. Again, it's based on the Minnesota Department of Health Model Plan. A brief synopsis of the changes from the last plan to this year. It has to do primarily with the lowered action limits. Before, previously, the EPA had 20 parts per billion. It's now lowered to five parts per billion. The new-- The new plan includes verbiage about mandatory action responses. And it also will require us to notify the community and MDA John reporting. So once this is approved, get together with Scott George, our resource and training advocate, and we'll start testing water and reporting all this and making sure it's reported in the proper space, so. Yeah, so that's about it. It's just been a revision, so.
So the dominant change was the drop in parts per million from 20-- Roughly 20 to five. Are there any other substantial changes from the previous? And is the cost about the same as it used to be?
The cost to--
The district?
Well, there's a potential that there could be cost increases. But again, we have ways around that. We can, you know, we can either remove or replace the source. We can implement a flushing program. Or we can, you know-- Again, these are-- When you think of bottle fillers, I think that's where they're kind of trying to get everyone to-- So when you test a bottle filler, it's always going to pass. It's going to be five parts per billion or lower. But a regular drinking fountain, now that's where the higher levels will come from. So again, this might be something that lobbyists are pushing for. You know what I mean? So there's ways around it. But I can assure you that all the bottle fillers, they will test properly every time, so.
Questions for Mr. Woodworth from the board?
Bottle filler and drinking fountain.
Well, a bottle filler has a filter on it. A drinking fountain does not. A normal drinking fountain, that's just in the hallway, like a porcelain one, that does not have a filter on it. But a bottle filler that you'll see in the hallway over here, there's filters on it, so.
So the test costs more to identify five parts versus 20 parts? Or should the testing be the same cost?
Testing will be the same cost. Yeah.
Any additional discussion from the board? So we have the 21-page lead-in-water management plan before us as an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis to accept the lead-in-water management plan as presented, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of accepting the lead-in-water management plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Woodworth. And now we have Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources. He's going to discuss with us this evening Employee Handbook, which is an action item for the board, as well as two policies. Welcome, Mr. Daniker.
Thank you, Chair Zebra, with members of the board, Superintendent Olson. So the first thing on the agenda for tonight that I have for you is the Employee Handbook. And this is an action item for approval this evening. We-- Over the summer, we did an extensive rewrite of the Employee Handbook, brought it up to date in several areas, added new and relevant items and others, and then provided it for feedback to various district leaders, including the Policy Committee two weeks ago. And so feeling pretty good about the state that it's in and happy to bring it forward for action tonight.
Is there any discussion from the board on the Employee Handbook? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Employee Handbook as presented.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis to approve the Employee Handbook as written, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the Employee Handbook for 2024, 2025, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, please say no. And motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right. And then we also have two policies for second reading tonight. As always, our policies go through the policy committee before coming to the entire board for first and second read. Second read tonight on policy number 611, homeschooling. The purpose of this policy is to recognize and provide guidelines in accordance with the state law for parents who wish to have their children receive education in a homeschool that is an alternative to an accredited public or private school. As, in addition to this, we also have a standard operating practices document that is housed within our teaching and learning department to help implement this policy into practice as well.
Is there any questions on policy 611 for Mr. Daniker? I think we'll approve them together since we don't have questions.
And then the second policy is policy 613, graduation requirements. As the board members, this one sat on first read for some time until we got it into a kind of a final, final state. And really, the delay is really part of the process of moving the high school from semesters to trimesters. And so a lot of credit goes to Principals Hansen and Co. Well for their work in getting this in shape along with Director Foshing and making sure that we have this document and this policy, you know, usable for our community.
Any discussion from the board on policy 613? Okay, so we have before us policy 611 and policy 613. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Casey Root to approve policy 611 and 613.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of approving policy 611 and 613 as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Daniker. And at this point, finding that our agenda is complete for the regular meeting, we will adjourn at 7:03. We will reconvene for our work session this evening at approximately 7:15. Thank you, everyone, for attending.